We're going to get started with the agenda portion of the meeting. We've got ordinances on second reading. An ordinance to amend salary ordinance provide for compensation pursuant to NJSA 26B-2B-32 to 35. We have nothing on first reading. Then we have resolutions. One, approve assembly committees. Two, approve payroll. Three, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales tip. Four, approve request for street closing requested by New Brunswick Fire Department. Joe Scott Adams from Handy Street to Senior Street for disaster relief fundraiser. Dates at October 14th, time 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Dunbrook tone. Five, approve request for street closing requested by Holy Family Parish. Location beginning at Sacred Heart Church corner of Troop Avenue down to Sedan Street. Cross at Livingston Avenue to French Street to Loubis Street at the corner of Somerset Street to Maple Street for Our Lady of Guadalupe procession. Date Monday, December 11th, 2017, time 8:00 p.m. to 9:15 p.m. Police extra duty. Six, approve request for street closing requested by Sedan Street Reform Church for Drift Street between Sedan Street and Talon Street for flea market fundraiser. Date Saturday, October 21st, 2017, time 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Police extra duty. Seven, approve form for Ms. Raffel 5050 for State Theater 15 Livingston Avenue to New Brunswick. Carrington Valley Young Miss Christian Association. Date Thursday, January 25th, 2018. Eight, approve award contract for Rural Enterprises Incorporated doing business as Rural Bus Sales for furnish and deliver one 2017 eight passenger vehicle with wheelchair lift and one wheelchair station for dialerized specification number 62117P not to exceed $59,380. Nine, approve award contract for furnish and deliver sporting goods for Division of Recreation and Youth Services System with BSN Sports not to exceed $11,384.60 with SNS Worldwide Incorporated not to exceed $11,920.34. Term 12 month period commenced on October 19th, 2017, ending October 18th, 2018. Specification number 61917P. Ten, approve authorization of rebid requested by water utility. Portable activated carton system rebid specification 61517WRR11. Approve amendment resolution R-091734. Reason to pay additional legal fees amount of $3,025 to Peter Joe Siskier for Board of Ethics Special Counsel from $8,275 to $11,300. Twelve, authorized purchase by police department under transfer. Police cooperative pricing system identifying 47CCPS from Carmen Dodge Incorporated for two Dodge Chargers to 2018 Dodge Chargers not to exceed $47,140. Thirteen, authorized tax collection to transfer credits on several utility accounts. Fourteen, authorized purchase for fire department under PPM Pennsylvania Education Purchasing Program from Apple Incorporated for one Apple laptop computer not to exceed $1,898. Fifteen, authorized purchase by Division of Parks on the New Jersey State approved Co-op number 65MCCCPS Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Pricing System from Triads Incorporated for one dump body not to exceed $53,886,28. Sixteen, authorized purchase by Division of Parks on the New Jersey State approved Co-op 65MESCPS Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Pricesystem from Campbell Freightliner LLC for one truck not to exceed $96,960. Seventeen, authorized purchase by police department under state contract A-83090-T S0109 radio communication equipment for accessory from Motorola Solutions Incorporated from Channel 2 digital encryption upgrade not to exceed $200,000. Sixteen, approve chapter budget insertion State of New Jersey Department of Treasury Division of Criminal Justice for 2017 voter on body armor replacement grant amount $12,471,042. Nineteen, approve request for city property by the New Brunswick Greatest Pop Warner Football so football location Memorial Stadium for New Brunswick Greatest Football Team playoff and championship game. Dates Wednesday, October 18th, two games from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Sunday, October 22nd playoff game from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Saturday, October 28th championship game 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Sunday, October 29th, 2017 from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Twenty, hold as unnecessary request approved ABC look relaxed for number. Twenty-one, approve relaxation of city noise levels requested by Sky High Records Equipment Incorporated. Reason to replace the place crane at parking garage at Fortson George Street in order to lift the HVAC equipment to the parking deck. Date Saturday, November 11th, 2017 alternative date Saturday, November 18th, 2017 and December 2nd, 2017, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Twenty-two, approve resolution to establish Engineering Department's request to establish a school zone for the purpose of speed limit restrictions at the location of New Brunswick Middle School. Twenty-three, approve authorization to advertise furnish and deliver one articulated wheel loader per cab for the Public Works Department. Specification 64817P. Twenty-four, approve award of contract for all seasons maintenance cleaning and lot services. 24 month period commenced on October 17th, 2017, ending October 18th, 2019. Specification number 620P17P not to exceed $24,950. Twenty-five, approve amendment resolution use of war monument for only for remaining dates. Approve request for the city property requested by Lighthouse Christian Fellowship War Memorial Park for preaching and passing out literature. Dates remaining dates October 21st to December 23rd, 2017, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Twenty-six, authorized purchase of Public Works Department under the state contract. Vehicle lifts and equipment huffing services for Stella Tilt Coney ST105 to FRA Earthlift E-Bright Mobile Column Lifts not to exceed $52,275. Twenty-seven, approve award of contract with Connor Davies LLP for review and analyze water utility bill recorded systems not to exceed $25,500. Twenty-eight, approve amendment of resolution R-061773. Reason additional amount of $887,000 with CBS Caremark for restriction plan service for the period July 1st, 2017, July 30th, 2018 not to exceed $887,000. Then we have discussion by council best practices inventory. And I think that's it. That's it, right? Yeah, that's it. Okay. All right, I think that's it. Okay. Meeting will come to order with clerk please call a roll.
Council Vice President Anderson is absent. Councilmember Egan?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig?
Here.
Council President Fleming?
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act has been quieted and satisfied at the annual notice which gave sufficient notice on the time and place and conduct of all public meetings and municipal councils of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk has been placed on the appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall. New Brunswick, New Jersey has been transmitted to the official paper of the City of New Brunswick namely the Home of New Jersey. Will you please rise to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember those that have given their lives in defense of freedom, those that continue to defend freedom, and those that have lost their lives since this violence. Thank you. All right, we've got approval of minutes. Motion to approve minutes.
Second. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. All right, we've got no public hearings and we've got ordinances on second reading. Number one, an ordinance to amend the salary orders for compensation provide for compensation pursuant to NJSA 26B-2B-32 to 35. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this order?
Good evening, Charles Crandall, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Could you just tell me the purpose of the ordinance?
Yes, from time to time, the court system allows for may even require special DUI sessions in municipal court. This allows those city employees who have to work those extra sessions to be compensated for such.
And under what job title or any job title?
Anyone, any municipal employee who works those sessions from judge prosecutor defender to maybe a clerical court personnel.
Great. Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, we'll go to the second.
Second. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. All right, we have no ordinances on first reading. Then we have resolutions from one all the way to 28. Would anybody from the public like to speak on the resolutions and resolutions only please give your name and address for the record as a reminder that we have five minutes.
Good evening, once again Charles Crandall, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Wanted to ask about 756, this encryption upgrade for the base $200,000, what are we getting
You want to answer? Yes.
If there's a second channel that the police department utilizes, as we discussed, I think last year encrypted our primary channel, this will be an upgrade to encrypt the secondary channel that we have as well. Okay. Is this really necessary? Do the police need two encrypted channels if it's going to cost us 200 grand? I don't understand why they can't have one channel that's encrypted and one channel that's not. And I also don't understand why it costs so much.
I didn't set the price, so we may go relative on what you think costs a lot and what doesn't, and that's what it costs. The first channel has worked well for us and we feel necessary to encrypt the second channel.
What has worked well about it, I'm curious?
As we discussed in previous meetings, you know, our radio transmissions have been compromised with certain weather cover investigations and by encrypting the radio, we haven't had any problem with those kind of compromises since then.
Didn't have anything to do with any newspaper articles, did it? I'll just make a point, I think that a greater priority than encrypting the second channel that the police used to communicate through the rate to the airwaves might be making body cameras a mandatory part of the police uniform. Other towns around us are doing this. Rutgers PD officers are driving around and patrolling right now and every one of them has a body camera on duty. And I don't understand why New Brunswick Police won't pony up the money into it. You've got enough money, was this $200,000 in the budget or is this an extra 200K that you found? I don't know how to... 200 grand?
I can say though that Rutgers Police has 100,000.
They also have body cameras, which is more important, is the question. What do you think?
Do you want to talk about body proof or do you want to talk about encryption? And you want to talk about, we're talking about encryption right now.
I'm suggesting there's a crisis of priorities at the police department and I'm asking you for your opinion, sir. What do you think is more important?
But you may just want to talk about encryption, which is what the resolution is on.
I just, you don't have to answer if you don't have an opinion, but...
I should stay on the resolution.
Well, my opinion is this resolution represents a poor priority for the department and it's a lot of money. And so it's a lot of money Captain Miller should know if it's in the budget or not. Call me crazy, I'd like to understand that 750, the Ethics Board Special Counsel, is Mr. Jost going to be hired as the regular counsel?
Right now he's a special counsel, I don't know if he's going to be hired as the regular counsel. At this point in time, he's a special counsel.
And so the decision will be made by the Ethics Board members themselves, correct?
Ultimately, it's the Ethics Board decision to make their counsel. Obviously, there's recommendation from the Law Department, but it's ultimately their decision.
Okay. And I guess I want to know how the board will decide on who their counsel's going to be if they don't have a meeting. And this is a problem that's come up before. Who's going to decide which lawyer shows up to the meeting? Because unless they hold a meeting, they're not going to be able to take action to hire an attorney. But presumably, when they have their next meeting, there'll be an attorney that shows up. Is Mr. Shammy going to ask Mr. Vignolo to show up or Mr. Jost or a different attorney?
I think that primarily depends on the agenda for the meeting, which I'm not aware of what's on their agenda, what business they have to finish. If Mr. Jost has business to finish, obviously he would appear. If it's new business that perhaps Mr. Jost has no involvement with, it could be a different attorney. So I couldn't speculate about that now.
Okay. Trust the Law Department knows where I stand on Mr. Vignolo as a choice.
No.
766, the O'Connor Davies contract, we spoke about this at the last meeting. Can you tell me what they're charged specifically is? What are they supposed to be looking into?
We want them to review the billing system that is down in the water utility business office. We want them to review some of the practices and procedures down in the water utility business office. We talked at the last meeting, Mr. Crandall said, are they going to go through every account and evaluate whether inappropriate adjustments were made or something of that nature? The answer to that is no, they're going to review the systems and the practices and make recommendation to us where there is recommendation to be made.
Long overdue, but also somebody should be looking into which landlords benefited from having their bills manipulated by the individuals who are now under indictment. Joseph Debonis and William Ortiz, longtime city employees who had some kind of scheme going where they would take bribes from landlords and in exchange lower their bills. And I can say tonight that Mr. Andres Manaya is one of those landlords, but I would like to know the others. I would like to know, you know, who benefited from this corruption? And I would encourage the city to get somebody to look into it if you're not already. I don't understand, you know, did you hand over the entire database to the Attorney General's office or is the city the only ones in possession?
Mr. Council President, members of council, this matter is a pending criminal matter. I know there's been indictments. City has been cooperative throughout the process and the information requested has been supplied by the city. I don't even know what has been supplied and what has been requested and what yet they have to request or review. But for us to comment about that is inappropriate at this time.
How's about the water meter that I alleged was proof of corruption and then the police came and snatched it up out of our office and would that handed over to the Attorney General's office? Is that the one that William Ortiz nicknamed the thief had installed it to benefit these landlords?
When you say landlords, you can come back as you will during the public discussion.
Yeah, but I've got a lot to talk about during that too, so I guess that's all for now. But please, somebody should look into who benefited and how deep this scheme went. That was my number one complaint about the Edo Work Investigation was you never really got to the bottom of it. You just sort of said, oh, we got something wrong here. And he went to jail for nine months and he got out. And, you know, I think that this corruption goes pretty deep, especially in the water utility, it needs to be thoroughly investigated. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public on the resolution? Seeing none, who would like to move?
Second. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes, and I must say, resolution 101745.
So noted. Councilmember Sikora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. All right, now we have items for discussion by council. We want to break that one first. Yeah.
Excuse me one second. Every year, the state asks municipalities to complete a best practices questionnaire. We have done that again this year. Out of 25 questions about how we conduct business here, we answered 19 in the affirmative. Two of the answers were not applicable and we answered no to four of the questions. Those answers do not cause us any loss in state aid. If you answer too many no questions, they withhold aid from you. If you don't mind, I'll just go quickly through the questions that we get that we answered as not applicable and I'll go through the questions that we answered no. The first one that we said not applicable, they wanted to know if the directors ratio, if it was less than 85% of market value, the director being, you know, in the tax assessing area, you know, have you made arrangements for a rebound to occur? We have already had a rebound recently conducted, we believe we're at 100% value, so we answered not applicable to that question. They wanted to know if we had any repeat findings from the previous audit and while our auditing firm noted that in the corrective action plan, we addressed every finding from 2016, there were, from 2015, excuse me, there were two repeat comments in the 2016 audit. They were that the recreation department fees be promptly deposited and the second comment was that the police dispatch fees be established by ordinance. The dispatch fees were corrected by ordinance during this summer by your action, but nonetheless, we were compelled to answer no because there were two repeat findings. We answered not applicable to prequalification of contracts. We do not prequalify the people who can respond to a bid that we put out. In some cases, you're able to do that, but there's a lot of regulation relative to how you go about prequalifying people. We don't do that as a matter of course, so we answered not applicable. Another question was, does your municipality exclude from healthcare coverage part-time elected and appointed officials? In parentheses, people who work less than 35 hours per week. Our answer was no. We do not exclude certain part-time employees. They want you to comment, who are the part-time employees who do receive health benefits? In our case, Arvin Aethol, Robert Adocio, Charlie Gaden, Robert Goodwin, Bill Hamilton, TK Shammy, Phil Burrow, Mary Casey and Mark Sintron are considered part-time employees and they receive health benefits. Another question we answered no to. The question is, for any employees covered by a collective bargaining agreement, let's just simplify that and say union employees, has your municipality instituted a policy to not compensate employees for sick leave accumulated after a certain date? The answer to that is no. We have over time negotiated caps on the compensation of accumulated sick time to a point now where the NEA employees are capped at $10,000, management employees are capped at $15,000 if you were hired after 1191, I believe. We also reduced the accumulation that police and fire can be compensated for, I think it is down to 481 hours per employee. So we have capped and we have limited a sick time accumulation by value, but we haven't done it by a date certain, so we answered no to that question as well. Final no question or final no answer, excuse me, is again for employees covered by a collective bargaining agreement, has your municipality eliminated all longevity awards? And the answer to that is partly yes. The NEA employees hired after 1191 are no longer eligible for a longevity award. Management employees are no longer eligible for a longevity award, they were hired after 1191. But PBA and FMBA employees are still eligible for longevity awards. They have not, that issue has not been successfully negotiated out of the contracts, so we were compelled to answer no to that question. So again, the sum total of all the 25 questions that we answered 19, yes, four no and two not applicable under no after its impact on state aid. Or Mr. Paddix can answer for you.
All right, now we have other items for discussion. I want to thank everybody who reached out during the hurricane crisis. We sent a truck down to Houston and it arrived. It was a truck load, it was a big load and it went directly to the people in Houston and didn't go to like a warehouse somewhere and sat down. It went directly to the people. So anybody, everybody that gave, we appreciate that and I know there's other efforts to give to other places. Did you guys?
With the police, I mean the fire department.
Oh, the fire department, sorry to interrupt. Yes, but it was a positive thing for residents and people were immensely blessed and they wanted to send a thank you to the people in New Brunswick. Anybody else? No? All right. All right, now we're going to open up to public discussion. Please remember you have five minutes and please give your name and address for the
Hello, my name is Rachel Spencer, how are you everyone? I'm trying to find out what's going on with the housing authority of New Brunswick because with all this being written up in the paper and me talking about millions of dollars being spent and there's no showing for it because this place is going to hell in a handbasket. There is no showing for what's being done and I want to know why they don't have receipts for what they supposed to have or and nobody's, you know, questioned anything? Nobody's saying anything? Now, I don't met with Mr. Moody about the bumps out there, but I was supposed to have been talking with you to get that to me. What I need is everybody in here who's come out there and look and see what this place is actually like. It's going to hell in the handbasket and they redoing Patterson and Asbury Farm, but Robus Village can't get done. Something needs to be done. We just had to fuss about getting the heat turned on because it's cold at night for certain sides of the housing community out there. But if all this money, this is why I've been asking every year and I keep being told, we have no funds, we have no funds, but you could spend a million dollars and have no funds? You can put a $200,000 generator in and we have no funds? Talk about raising a building that needs to be raised completely and have no funds? They tell me, oh, we're going to, they're going to move the people out of one building, half of them, and the other half needs to be moved out. The building is sinking underneath the ground. It's starting to sit on top of pipes and floors. Pipes are busting and floors are buckling out there. This is no way for nobody to live. Mold is rampant. Who has good mold? Who, how do you know what's good mold and bad mold? Oh, this is good? There is no good. And when I walk up to your porch and can't hardly be because I can't even get inside the door because the mold is running rampant in these buildings out here. If I go right here and say, how you doing and have to back up and can't and I have to catch myself and go take a pop, something wrong. The girl that stays in that apartment, her whole ceiling caved in in her kitchen. Other people walls between two apartments, pipes are busting left and right. I call them the nasty boys. The nastiest brothers been living out there all summer between Carter Road and Jennings Court. Because people's pipes are busting left and right in between the walls and the cabinets and stuff. Then you tell them, we need to have an extermination. Don't just come do one apartment at a time, make everybody go out, leave for two hours and spray the whole, but I can't get nobody to do that. This place is, people are scared to come say anything because they think they might get put out. I'm the only one getting up off, excuse my French. I'm the only one getting up off, excuse my French, off my ass and coming down here and complaining. I'm going to housing meetings, I'm coming here complaining. Until something gets done till the day I die, I will be in and out of here, because New Brunswick needs to think about the Fort Two side sometime, instead of damn downtown all the damn time. There's other people to think about besides one area. Then they got this big building going up for ruckers and all this stuff, this is, you know, you got many areas coming in here telling me they want to help people, help people. We got people on the Fort Two side that needs help. I need somebody to come out here and walk around, don't go straight to housing or John Clark, come out there and talk to the people and see how we're living out there. See how stuff is getting backed up out there, and half the time, they don't want to rush to send nobody to fix it. I have people call me every day, I said, call John Clark, call this one, when you can't get this one, call this one, when you can't do that, I call HUD, I leave them messages every other day sometime. Nobody's getting back to me, but sooner or later, somebody gonna have to do something. If dogs on Patterson, apartments are being torn out and are older than the bill, I mean younger than the bill. The bill is much older than a lot of these apartments in New Jersey. Patterson is getting ready, tear theirs down, Asbury Park getting ready, tear theirs down. I'm sitting here watching news, I said, well, damn, what's happening with the bill? The closets, I'm going to some of them apartments, I've never been in all of these apartments, big holes in the closets because they're so old, and then when you tell them about it, they don't have one, oh, we're gonna do it later, or, it's not in the budget. But you can go buy new cars for the people, for them to ride around in, okay? Now what's up with that?
All right. Me and you talked, and I promise to get back, and do I get, I'll get back to you ninety-eight point. This last time, I apologize, because I didn't get back to you, because we had a track of something, I don't want to get into it, but there's a reason behind it, but we can continue this, and I'm not just blowing smoke, I will come out and we'll, we'll sit down.
Have to go through, you have to, things, we like, we need health inspectors to come out and look, and whatnot, because this is not, it's, it's starting to go to hell in the handbasket real fast, and for years, I've been saying, telling housing, John Clark and Andrew, I keep getting next to, oh, we, well, we're gonna raise this building, you're gonna take a lot of money to raise a building, up off the foundation, raise it, just lift it up, when you can see in the roof that it's old, you can see on the foundation it's underground.
Like I said.
So we, we got to get.
I don't want to, we're not trying to.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but somebody needs to get back to me, because I'm about ready to go further with this.
Okay.
I sure enough am, because like seven on my side will be there.
Thank you.
My name is Len Twist, I'm from Carney, Twenty South New Brunswick Avenue. I want to thank the mayor and town people.
I didn't hear you.
My name is Len Twist, I live at Twenty South New Brunswick Avenue, Carney, New Jersey. I'm the administrator for Carney TNR in regards to feral cats, I prefer to call them free-roaming, feral kind of strikes the fear in the people. We've got the organs passed in Carney, November twelfth, twenty fourteen, and with much success. I've been to several other towns throughout the state selling TNR with much success. Most recently, Old Bridge, we're a few miles away from here, Bayonne, Irvington, South and West Orange, Wayne, North Hamilton, Lynn Harris, Harrison will be going next with it. I've been asked to come down here and give you some of the statistics that we've managed to get out of Carney. I brought some notes, I don't really go into, but the free-roaming cats can be a nuisance and a health hazard for the residents of New Brunswick. Having said that, what can be done about it? Over the last forty-five years, trapping euthanized has not worked, it's a waste of time and money. That's the true definition of insanity, doing the same thing over and over again expecting a different result. It's not working. I do have some literature I'm going to hand out, and that's this one. One unaltered pair of cats, a male and a female actually, left unneutered, unfed, over the course of seven years can produce three hundred and seventy thousand ninety-two cats. That's all their offspring having babies, all the way down the line, it's not the same tune it has all that in. New Brunswick has a population a little over fifty-seven thousand people. Using the Ally Cat Ally guide, that equates to one thousand cats per ten thousand residents, means you have fifty-seven hundred cats free-roaming in this town. Probably more with your industrial area and wooded area, and maybe in, this woman here is a neighborhood. Cats are, you know, they can be a nuisance, they can also be a blessing, they also control rooms, but their spraying is foul, screaming in the middle of the night is foul, TNR eliminates all this stuff, we get rid of the foul smell, males no longer spray, females no longer are made of, therefore, the only resources they're looking for now are food and shelter. We have caregivers in this town that really love this town, let them take a sense of ownership to it. We've done it in Carney, we've proven it. The first two months, we started on November twelfth, the end of the year, they measured a 60% reduction in cats going to the shelter for euthanizing over the previous year, and we only worked the six weeks, they gauged me against all two months. The first quarter of twenty fifteen, I had a reduction of fifty-one point six percent, I'm sorry, sixty percent reduction going to the shelter. The second quarter of twenty fifteen, we had a reduction of fifty-four percent. Over the course of the year, we had a fifty-one point six percent reduction at the end of twenty sixteen, going to the shelter for euthanizing. The cats were being managed. Does the shelter still euthanize? Sure. Sick or badly injured, put out of its misery? Yes, they do, but they don't kill for space any longer, which is what they were doing. People here can take the, the whole thing, no cost to the town to die, that's the best part, your city will not have to pay anything for this. Your animal control would be really, there's a lot of responsibilities, the volunteers will take care of things here in town, most of them will probably end up with a 501(c)(3) like myself, from a nonprofit. My town was blessed with the grandfather of it, the shelter, we trap them, take them to the vet, the shelter pays for the vetting of the animal, the town pays for the shelter, so it's like, the town is paying, it was already done. It's been a very good deal. One of the things I wanted to point out was, the training is available to all your caregivers from People for Animals, also Brian Hackman from HSUS, the Humane Society of the United States, he will be here, he's your date with me, because we're going to talk more about this insurance in the future. The successes have been astronomical, the numbers are just incredible. We have forty-three certified carriers, I just got my numbers for what, from the date of our inception, it's Jan, July thirty-first, I've vetted personally two thousand six hundred and fourteen cats. I feed over two hundred a day, and sometimes I gotta dip into my social security money to buy food, but most of it's all donated, we run food drives, things like that. This is my new calling, I used to work in East Brunswick, I have a lot of customers from this area, I had my shop there for eleven years, and you have some very, very good people in this area, come to know them, love them, I used to come do barbecues. You have, like I said, you've got a great town here, let some of these people take a sense of ownership, mayor, give them an opportunity, let them show you what they can do. Thank you.
I have a question. You have a statistic on how long it takes for the population to start losing, I know you're talking about.
Well, you'll see reductions, you'll see reductions within the first six months, absolute reductions. I was at the town block party, and one of the residents, who I didn't know the mayor was standing there, was wearing shorts, and she says, you know, come to think of it, I haven't seen any cats running around anymore. I couldn't script it, it was, it was like, hey, you know, and the mayor, he loves it because he's written the ordinance, the rest of the town, the rest of the state is following. His ordinance has been adopted, like, white out Carney, put it in Old Bridge, put it in Bayonne, put it in North Hamilton, put it in Lynn Harris, it's, it's petting on so big, I mean, this is not, I'm just, I like to focus on Jersey, it's happening in Cook County, they've got a thing of Camden, of all towns, has a TNR program. Patterson, we're working on it. Irvington just adopted it recently. We are working with the board of freeholders for this particular area that will be working towards getting a spay and neuter, trap neuter return program going in this area. You should get on board before it's mandatory is the way I look at it, because it's, I didn't think we'd get this far, but we've really made some huge progress. Any questions?
Do you have a copy of the ordinance, please?
I've got one in my truck, I can move down and get it.
I think you should give it to the.
I have a copy of the Old Bridge ordinance.
Say what?
I've given it to the police department to review and to eventually get back.
It's on a TM file from Carney, you can download it, it's two oh one four dash four four, AK, the Twist Law, so, I guess we've had some huge success with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since the last meeting, we're supposed to have, some of the members of the group were supposed to have met with Russ Marquette, that did not happen, he had not heard from anyone, but I did some research myself, throw in con and forwarded it to the police department, who manages the animal control unit, for them to review and to get into a position to make a recommendation to when they have a chance to do so. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nancy Scaldone, I live at one ten Chester Circle here in New Brunswick, I've been there for thirty-five years. I want to thank Mr. Twist for coming and sharing his expertise about TNR. I also have some information here for each of the council members, and each of these folders, just good, basic information on TNR, and in case none of you have any of that, you can go over it, there's something five top. One thing that Mr. Twist brought up was keeping these cats out of shelters. You are contracted to Blooming's Kennels in East Brunswick. I went over the contract, and was just wondering, I saw that in two thousand sixteen, you're contracted to her for forty-two thousand dollars for the year, for kennel services, I guess that doesn't include intake of each animal that comes in, because there is a fee I now of seventy-five dollars per dog, seventy dollars per cat. In two thousand seventeen.
Can I answer that?
Yes.
In two thousand sixteen, we had to empty a house full of cats, I think it was as many as twenty or thirty.
Forty.
Forty. And it was very expensive to have them boarded and kept, it wasn't a usual year with Blooming Kennels, that incredible expense was associated almost exclusively to that one property.
Well, in two thousand seventeen, you're contracted for fifty thousand dollars, that's an eight thousand dollar increase?
I'm sure it's not to exceed, plus we're managing, we're providing animal control service to North Brunswick.
Yes, I understand that, and I've also gone over the invoices, and I don't know if I was right or wrong, but I came up with, in addition to her three hundred dollar administration fee that she taxed on to each invoice that she sent you, I came up with an incredible number of over fifteen thousand dollars on intake fees, just for cats. Is that?
I don't, I don't review the invoices, they're paid by the police department.
Well, I went through, so, they spent fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in addition to what you pay her every year, just to take, for them, for her to take in cats. There's also something called shelter usage. Let's say she has a room for cats, and that's a hundred percent of that room is to be used for cats. She uses thirty-five percent of that room, according to New Jersey Animal Observer Statistics, which they get from the state of New Jersey. In two thousand fifteen, Teak Blooming's had the third highest kill rate for cats in the state. So, I mean, I'm just really urging you to find someone else to do this, because she has a terrible reputation, like I said, she's got the third highest kill rate in the state, which was projected, that could have been, can be as high as seventy-one percent kill rate, just for cats. One thing that I do want to do is thank Mr. Anthony Barber, he was very helpful to me with all the stuff that I over, and he's an asset to it, which I believe he's recognized in the article.
Barber.
Yes, Barber. He's a very nice man, and I was very encouraged by the fact that he was very willing to learn and work with us on this. I have a few things here, these are your intake sheets that you sent down, and we're concerned about our kittens that have been turned into Blooming's. There's no reason why kittens, you can't work with a rescue and have a contacted rescue, there are plenty of rescues around here, get your animal control department to work on rescues, because she's going to kill these kittens. I came across kittens that were two weeks old. I take care of two-week-old kittens. Two-week-old kittens are bottle babies, and they're bottle babies till almost five weeks, and I know for a fact that Linda Blooming does not have bottle baby feeders, so my guess is, is she's killing these kittens. I just lost a five-week-old kitten. So my five-week-old kitten came back from a vetting, a box cremated, her two-week-old and five-week-old kittens end up in the garbage after she kills them. So that's my concern, and also the fact that, you know, we're, these kittens are not up for adoption, because they're certainly not up on her pet finder page. So for somebody who takes in so many cats, she's got eighteen animals up on her pet finder page, so she takes in all these kittens, she's got to kill on them, because she's certainly not sending them out to rescues, because she doesn't do that, she doesn't advocate for lost animals, people don't have, they have from seven in the morning till ten o'clock in the morning to go try to retrieve her animals, she demands a picture, she gives people a hard time on the phone, so I'm urging you to please research and try to find someplace else to take these animals. St. Hubert's is an excellent place, I know it's a little far to go, but if you can contract with them, that would be great, because I know that they'll put these animals up for adoption. They also have a barn, a barn cat program, where they send these cats, they'll have them sent to farms, and they'll do their job, they own farms.
Thank you.
So, but one other thing, this is from Sustainable New Jersey, and your animal control officers went to this a couple of years ago, so they know what's going on with TNR, so I just wanted to let you know that. I mean, if they went to learn about it, why aren't they at least promoting it? So you're spending a lot of money up in the Blooming's, just want you to know that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Can I ask one other question? Oh, no, I don't. All right, I want to ask, well, I just want to ask one question.
Could you ask it, I'm sorry, can you ask it to me?
Yeah.
I gotta keep it in order, we have to keep it in order.
I'm sorry, what is corrective active plan?
Can we, can we discuss that, can we, we have to keep this in order, please?
All right, y'all go ahead, because I will get back to this, I want to find out what it is.
Hello, I'm Carol Pazment, I live in North Brunswick. We have a pilot TNR program going online in North Brunswick, and it's so far successful, we're trying to get it spread throughout the township. So I'd like to just speak in support of Nancy and Mr. Twist, I think that TNR is definitely the way to go, the community cat program is the only thing that'll help the situation, and I have to agree with Nancy about Blooming's. Blooming's, she's very good with dogs, but with cats, she's miserable, she doesn't, people see them as living creatures, and it's for her, it's just a money-making proposition, take them in, kill them, take their money, and that's what she's about. It's not a shelter, it's a concentration camp there for cats, it's an extermination camp. It really needs to change, you need to find another place, and promote TNR, please.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everybody, my name is Teresa Vivara, New Brunswick resident for years. One thing very quickly about the houses, yes, we've got to work very closely with the authority with everybody, because I agree with some houses in New Brunswick, terrible conditions, we still paying heavy rent, and nobody's doing anything, people don't know where to go and complain, and we always go and complain, they never, there is nobody that will follow up, so I think we are willing to cooperate with you, with everybody that is in charge of housing, or have a tier of property, or responsible property, so the tenants also have some kind of, equally, the payment they do to the number, the home that they live in, I think it's in terrible conditions, and again, I think I can afford to complain about all these bedwags and rats and rats that are in New Brunswick increasing, increasing. that are in New Brunswick increasing, increasing. Please, let's move something together. That's the house, and the other part is the park authority. There is also the necessity of continue sending information to the community members about, about the need for them to register the cars. There is this officers that are putting tickets and tickets even that people is living in the houses, and the people doesn't know how to fix that situation. So it's like the officers are just collecting these tickets without educating the community about how to leave their homes, cars with the park authority. So we need to do something about it. Please reach out to us and let us know how to help and work with you. The other part is garbage. We need the public works to provide us with the cans to put the garbage in adequately and work with everybody. They just give one garbage can to landlords, not to tenants. And I think that's a terrible thing. Also, I think it was given money...
You mean the recycling which can?
Everything. Like you see, there is a lack of can, garbage cans everywhere in New Brunswick. So it's few, few homes that has can garbage unless they purchase by themselves, but I think it was provided by the, by the city. So I think we have to do something.
We give out the recycling or something?
Recycling what's garbage you get by yourself?
Oh, well, we have a problem without them because you have to tell us that. We have to, it was that situation because we want the public works. And they said, yes, we can, when you own a house, the landlord has to come and ask for one, two cans.
That's recycling, only recycling.
Okay, so then we got to do something again. As a city, then you see all the garbages that are around, and it's a terrible, terrible situation in your, as they mentioned, there is two New Brunswick, one downtown, everybody takes care of it, and the other side is abandoned total. So I think we got to work together again to ensure that...
I mean, with the trash system, I mean, if it's a rental situation, that's the landlord is responsible to provide the cans, you know, the landlord is responsible. And if it's a homeowner, I mean, that's part of homeownership where, you know, we go, you know, we get our own cans, except for the recycling cans, except for that.
Okay, so then, again, we have a problem. So somehow we have to work and find out a solution to the problem. I don't want, I kept to hear it's a landlord thing, was it tenant thing? I think this is our community thing, that we got to work together with a solution that everybody understands because this going is increasing, and it's also increasing the plagues that we have in New Brunswick. I don't know about public, and I want to just say it, and there, tenemos un problema y tenemos que trabajar juntos para asegurarnos la limpieza de nuestras calles de correta, al igual que trabajemos con los dueños de las casas y los que rentan las casas por la ciudad para asegurarnos que todos cumplamos como el trabajo debería ser para tener una ciudad libre de plagas porque está incrementando esta situación y las casas están terribles en New Brunswick y las rentas van creciendo. So this is a terrible thing. The other last thing, I think I have one minute left. I want to read this to you because we have a meeting late lately. On October 10th, one youth from the New Brunswick High School was assaulted in Jersey Avenue. The mother, single mother, she has to work two jobs, and she wasn't able to attend quickly to the school right away to find out about his own case and situation. She called us to find out how she could report the case to the police, or if who could find somebody at the school that could help his son, I mean, her son, who was attacked by a male who took his school cell phone and $10 for her food. We told the school, and they transferred us to the police office at the New Brunswick High School. The office will respond to us, provide valid information, but also took us time for him to respond, to understand and respond positive to our request of adding help for this boy. We alert the parents via Facebook. Make sure your kids are taking the bus on time, we said. A boy has been assaulted. The public response was interesting. They wrote that many other incidents have been occurring in the same area to youth. Some parents complained on the bus issue as a cause for kids walking to school. Others complained on the lack of action from the New Brunswick Police Department. As part of the response, we have a meeting on Cover 12, in which community members came to tell us their stories, all the assaults they suffered, and the lack of follow-up from the police department. Some of these cases were left unattended by the police, or nobody was able to respond to community members affected in their time. Some others took days until somebody from the police came to their business or comes to us, what happened? Somebody living here, call the police. Others never got any positive response from the detectives or the police. And the community is accepted. This, if the community is accepting this stuff as part of the reality, don't call the police, don't matter, because they never do any better. This way of thinking is destroying our community in a civic and moral way, or kids are learning that they cannot trust the police. They're called invisibles. They call them invisibles, the police. A strong force you never see when it's called for assistance, they said. Last is known how hard a police officer job is for some that love their job and do the right thing always, but not for many others. And because of them, all the police officers are seen this terrible way in our city, which is not right of thing. I want to finish, but please.
I know I'm coming up, but we try to keep everything over. I want Captain Miller to even respond to it.
Yes.
But we have five minutes.
All right, please.
I gave you extra time, I know, but I gave you extra time to try to wrap and finish it up.
Please, let me finish.
But I mean...
You're taking my time.
That's what I'm saying.
Last is medical need, if you want to...
And you, as I'm saying, we can, we can, we get the gist of it. We can talk to Captain Miller after the meeting. We have to keep within the time. Otherwise, everybody will run out of time.
Sir, just let me finish because it's on...
I mean, excuse me?
It's just let me finish.
I'm asking you, I'm asking you.
If you will let me, if you will let me, listen, I've called you, I reached out to you many times, and you never had time to meet.
Excuse me?
You never had time to meet, sir. So let me just switch this.
I mean, but so right now, we have to keep order. We have, I've been asking you, I'm asking you, we have to keep order.
Let me finish my reading. Let me finish my reading, sir.
How much more do we have?
These two lines. So let me finish it.
It's up to you, it's easier for you.
We understand how difficult the job of these officers is part, as part of our city is. We believe that working together, we can ensure a better place for all. With this idea in mind, we ask the city council, the police department to provide a name of the officer willing to work with the community as many ways possible, willing to take incident reports and do the follow-up with the cases. An officer in the community will feel secure to speak and call if it's needed. An officer, officer is, was being organized, we reach out to him at least once a month and as the police office, police officer photo. Some of my side, we have the crime watch meetings. Sadly, this morning is not working so much as we see, and the, and the crime increasing people is getting more affected than before. Last is a million organizations are willing to collaborate with you and the police department and the city council as needed. Please, let's work together to move our community forward, protect and educate these security of children if it's possible for all, as a responsibility for everybody, not only the, the police or the parents, but everybody. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, and thank you for giving me a chance to speak up. My name's Pat Paddock. I live in Rutgers Village, 134 Tunisian Road. First, would like to explain that I have three issues. I'll try and wrap them into the five minutes. First off, I'd like to second and third and fourth and fifth, the conversations from the folks about T N R. I'm an animal lover, I'm an animal advocate. I have a lot of experience in Rutgers Village, very well-known in the development. People tend to think I'm like a go-to gal, and I do know that we can do this. We can do this out there. I know we can do it. So thank you, Nancy.
I wanted to remember your names.
Len, Carol, for all that you've already done in this, because this is a lot of work to, to present, but it is difficult. I'm also aware that there is somewhere in the, out there right now, top of having a county shelter. I'm not sure about that, and I'm not real concerned about that right now. So I really just wanted to second and third and fourth my concerns, my backing of a T N R in New Brunswick, and definitely getting rid of Ms. Blooming and her ways. I can tell you, people I know in East Brunswick think she's a fur baby lover. They have argued with me, telling me she would never put down a cat, ever. So again, I felt strongly. Second thing, not so big deal, and I think I'll make it too. Okay? And you can stop me if you need to, because at this point, I may be jumping ahead, but I'm understanding there's a hotel proposed to go into the area of the Venegas in the Route 1 and Route, Route 1 and 18 intersection right by Rutgers Village Edgebrook. I would like to express my concern, many concerns about that kind of thing going into that footprint.
That has come up yet. Nancy, you probably going to have a public, you know, yeah.
There will be.
Oh, yeah, most definitely.
So Rutgers Village residents in Edgebrook, will we...
Definitely.
Yeah, and that'll come before the planning board. You'll have an opportunity to speak there if you'd like, before we even come back to council.
So does that mean I need to come November 13th?
Is that our next, I believe that's the next planning board.
I mean, I don't want to miss, and I didn't even know what was going on. I'm kind of out of the loop for other reasons with family issues, so...
No, no, it hasn't been announced yet.
So it's too soon?
Yeah, I mean, it never was too soon, but it hasn't come to the planning board yet.
Sorry.
It hasn't, it hasn't.
Okay, so then I have time to squeeze in my third thing?
Hope so.
Thanks so much. Okay. I understand there's noise regulations and ordinances and such, and in Rutgers Village, I'm not sure about the rest of the city, we have an awful lot of fireworks and firecrackers and rockets going off and so forth. I also love dogs, and I have one. And my neighbors think that anytime of year, whether it's this past weekend or Christmas Eve, it is okay to celebrate with fireworks. So, you know, I'm kind of like a watcher of the schoolyard. I call when I see things amiss. I don't want to be a pain, but I also don't think it's fair that I have to medicate my dog in order to manage barbecue in a neighbor's house. So what are the, I mean, I understand also there are some type of fireworks that are currently okay?
Not too big ones.
Yeah, they sound...
Like, it's only certain ones that in New Jersey. It's like the sparklers and...
I think it's small.
Oh, sure.
Oh.
I'm sorry. Captain Miller.
There was a law enacted before 4th of July, making certain fireworks legal. I don't know specifically product or product, what they are, you know. I can look up the statute for you if that's what you require. If the fireworks are being lit off and violating our noise ordinance, of course, that would be a violation. You know, both police and come out.
What's the timeframe on that, though?
It's, it's all about the noise. The noise, there is no hours.
Oh, I got you, okay.
It's any time.
Okay.
About the, you know, if someone sets off one firework, though, just so you know, you know, one firework, when the police arrive, there's not going to be...
I would never call for one.
So, you know, they would have to, the police would have to see them setting off the firework, hear the noise in order to, you know, issue...
Oh, fine, oh, fine.
But call also, they, the police come out and...
Well, thank you. I did, in fact, Saturday call, and I was assured, because they know I don't call for anything but good reasons, sort of, and I apologize when I call off fireworks, because they got bigger and better things to do. But they came out, and it continued. And these are like, kind of like, I have to medicate my dog. I don't know about other people and their animals. I also think sometime, if you want to kind of sleep earlier. So, yeah, that's it. Thank you for allowing me to address you and all of you, and I'll be waiting to hear what the hotel situation is, and I'd like to be part of that discussion.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Veronica, and I use, I need help because I, my English is not too well, and I need to be sure you understand when I talk about the city in New Brunswick. So right here, say 200 for the police, 200,000, right? And I live in Delavan and Trump, right? It's a, it's a hot spot for violence, right? So his radio communication equipment is accessories. What is accessories? I would like the, the city and the police talk about the camera in that side of New Brunswick. Because we have a Paul Robinson School, we have drugs, we have prostitutes, no say?
Prostitutes.
Prostitutes, yeah. Violence with our kids, like Teresa said, and that every time, anytime, anywhere, right? And the police went, I, I lived in that, in that side for 10 years, right? And I count the police pass around the side. And let me, let me tell you something, it's rarely, yours when that shot is, someone shot, right? Or something happened, really, really happened in that side. It's food, Delavan, Sweden, Branson, it's violence, garbage, anything you imagine in this side, like say, someone says the bike in New Brunswick. The good side and the bad side. The people cross your street with tight knives, but if you see the people who live, who, it's impossible to keep the street clean with the garbage, it's impossible, the department, the department clean. We have in, in that side and the street, we have four tree die for three years and nobody changed. Yeah? But the other side, we have beautiful street, tree, pardon, tree, right? Clean tree, the, the, that car, the sweeper. Okay, that's very good. September 11th was Monday. I don't know if the city was a day off or something like that, but that, that's been sweeping for garbage, it's not passed, it didn't pass. Say, why? I said, why? The city don't do nothing for, for that, for the violence and the street. I have five people who, who get violent for their cell phone and get what? When the, the, the men call the police, I'm sorry for the police, but it's true, it's one hour late, my neighborhood four time, someone coming in the house, change four time door, one, two, and they, and they finally take, take it off, right? I asked the, the, the person if we can put camera outside. Say, no, that's not permit for, for the city, right? Today, someone asked me for the camera. Why? You say, someday, the police say one thing, and then next, when someone died, something happened, they looking around proof. That's not fair. Always we care all kids, the community care all kids by own, right? But we taxes, I pay taxes. A few years ago, I know, somebody top the parking, why? Supposed who work in the city is high ethic. If don't, if the, the, the city hiring ethic people, please, or, or our life is increased. We pay a lot taxes. We, we have the best college. We have the best hospital. What is the taxes? They pay it to the city. So that is, I, I live for 25 years in New Brunswick, right? Thank you so much for take this, this time for here, us community. Please, we, we are looking around for the best life for our kids. Please, we, we are looking around for the best life for our kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Pedro Guays Vázquez. I work in the 278 Siren. It's a pequeño restaurant. El veintiséis de septiembre, me asaltaron a dos. Dos de la mañana. Salí por algunas cosas para limpiar. Dentro del restaurante, tenía en el carro de mi patrón. Cuando saqué las cosas, me atacaron tres personas.
Said that he works at an establishment, at 278 Sodan Street, and he was marked at 12th Avenue. Um, he wanted to retrieve somebody's side of his boss's car when he was attacked.
Me quitaron ciento ochenta dólares y me golpearon en el oído.
They bought me a hundred and eight dollars and they hate like...
Tuve que ir al hospital, me sacaron sangre y me di, me hicieron una radiografía. El doctor dijo que mi amigos me habían, pues, centrado para adentro, hubo esto, me había enterrado.
He was, he had a ear and he had to go to the hospital, and the doctor said that they have fractured one of his ear, you know, and so they...
Cuando llama la policía nunca llegó. Digo, la otra señora siempre llega tarde. No sé cómo pagar los billes del hospital.
Caballero, antes de que usted hemos, eh, sido dando su testimonio, usted dice que ese día que le sucedió eso, la policía llegó o no llegó?
Llegó en la tarde, porque nosotros, yo la llamé en la tarde, la noche ya no puede, porque estaban...
Oh, so, so llegó cuando usted llamó?
Sí, pero llegó como...
Son dos cosas diferentes, I have to make it clear. I, I just asked to clarify whether the police was called and they showed up or not. Uh, he did not call the same day that the incident happened. He called the next day, because he wasn't even going to the hospital, he was in the funeral, so he called the next day. The police did call, even though they were there like half an hour after he called, but they did show up. Ah, el que quería aclarar es porque usted se dio, yo como que usted dijo que la policía no había llegado, pero llega, ¿también llegaron?
Sí, llegaron, cabrera.
Cuando usted llamó.
Eh, fueron un reporte, creo que, iban a investigar.
He said that they took the report and they were...
No, so ahorita, um...
Investigated hates, but he hasn't heard anything yet.
Tengo nada, no sé qué. Un año antes, no, no tengo la fecha exacta, también llamó la señora de la policía. A un señor le venía a decir que se metió al restaurante. Eran cinco muchachos jóvenes, como de do, de once a quince años. Le llamó la policía.
We wish here the owner of that establishment had called, so that police people could find out what is that went into the establishment.
Se alcanzó a entrar al restaurante, y le llamó la policía la señora. Y le dijo el oficial que le atendió la llamada, que no, que se fijara si afuera, a la puerta, si estaban fuera los muchachos, y le dijo que sí, porque estaban...
They said when she called, that was a year ago, that the owner called the establishment to report that, or that was in the area that going into the, into her establishment, and the police started to look outside, see if they were still there.
Le cayó en la pared de la puerta, le metaron una silla de fierro, de metal.
The jóvenes.
Y eran cinco jóvenes.
And they are, eh, when she went to look outside, these youngsters threw a chair into her establishment.
El policía, los, dos oficiales llegaron a los cuatro días.
Two police officers, ¿y ella llamó ese día?
Sí, ella llamó, estaba llamando hace rato.
I pointed to, um, his, by mistake, he said that the owner at that time called the police, and the police showed up four days later.
Y el día que llegaron, llegaron a mojarlo. Había dos clientes ahí comiendo, y les preguntaron, ¿quién llamó la policía? Con un carácter de intimidación.
And the police approached, uh, when they went into the establishment, it was very aggressive.
Y le, ya después fue con nosotros, los que trabajamos adentro, le preguntó, eh, ¿quién había llamado la policía? ¿Nadie ha llamado la policía hoy? Dice, no, dice, ¿de aquí llamaron? No llegó el hijo de mi patrón, y dice, ¿qué está pasando? ¿Por qué está la policía aquí?
They said that when they, they went into, you know, the rest of the man, or asking who called the police, and, uh, they were telling him that nobody called the police on that day, eh, at that time. And then the owner's son explained to the officers, let people have a policy, they...
Le dijo que, ¿quién le había llamado? Dice, no, dice, llamaron de aquí adentro del teléfono del negocio. Dice, nadie ha llamado aquí.
Y fue para, adelantado para aprovechar el tiempo. Eh, y que, ¿se estaban refiriendo a la llamada que me han hecho cuatro días?
Sí, cuatro días.
So the guy was, you know, to sum it up, it was that, um, they were referring, they didn't realize that they all had been banned for days before, you know, that they were traditional there.
Ya le digo.
La señora de la dueña del establecimiento llamó a la policía.
No, ese era encargado, la señora, pero se está encargado de esa...
Hizo, hizo una querella con la policía.
No, porque nomás fueron y les preguntaron a los cuatro días.
Yo no sé, después de eso...
El muchacho, no.
La señora se fijó con la policía, le trato de que le dieron.
No.
Okay. I think the lady, for the complaint, the police, on the reason that...
El hijo del dueño le dijo que se fueran, porque esa llamada, la había sido cuatro días.
I, I provided my card to this woman here who spoke earlier. I will give my card to him as well. I, I, there's some things that aren't adding up here, so I, you know, I'd like to have a detective speak with them and find out exactly what the whole story is here. Uh, but we're not gonna be able to have this.
Well, the reason, the reason of the one that happened a year ago.
Well, well, you know, let's, we're not, I'm not gonna be able to provide any answers for it tonight, so, um, if you happen to give my card, you can contact me. You know, I have, uh, the file, well, officers, I can speak to him as well, and we can work this out.
Caballero, como, eh, eh, el capitán de la policía está acá presente, está diciendo que como el tiempo está corto y él no va a poder proveerle ninguna respuesta a su pregunta, por poder comentar en su caso, él le dio la información de ese alivio a Teresa, para que entonces se pueda comunicar con usted y que un detective hable con usted directamente, o alguien de la policía, y tome los datos, investigar el sin, qué fue lo que sucedió, okay?
Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Anybody else from the public?
Myself. My name is Carlos Ramirez, reporter with New Brunswick today. And as, um, the lady who was just here was mentioning, there are kids that are living in streets, especially like Delavan and Tru, that is one of the worst areas that the police have called before the HUD, so. And there's way too much shooting, way too many thousands, and drugs being given out there. And for us, it's like, we're always like, every once or every second, we're there covering a shooting or a robbery that was occurred outside those properties. As they mentioned, the lady, that people sometimes come and ask for any cameras there to see if they happened, or that they want cameras. And all the people mentioned to her that it's against, um, the city's policy to have cameras on properties. And I, even myself, my home has cameras and...
The police department will never tell people not to put cameras on their own property. We encourage it. We've never said, "Don't put cameras on your property." There might be an issue with putting it on public property, sometimes you can't tell that you can't. But if someone has their own property, we would never discourage anyone from putting a camera on their own private property.
That would be a landlord or...
Yeah, that's what I mentioned, yeah. They specify whether it's police or not. She just said that people have asked for any cameras, so somebody told her that it's against the city's policy to...
Maybe her landlord told her that.
Yeah, I wouldn't know, but, yeah.
That certainly isn't city policy, look at it, no, it's...
And if you see the property, like I said, maybe it is part of the city property, then it's a different story for your house. And I was gonna address that after she spoke later on, some of the things that she said. But, yeah, that was one of it.
Yeah.
Who cameras in the property?
Yeah, as I mentioned, um, that we call police for help. They usually respond with a certain period of time. We don't know whether it's, um, there's another crime happening at that same time, or why they're responding late. For whatever the reason is, I think if the city is increasing the numbers of the police, obviously, I think the response time of responding to a scene, whether it's a priority or not, should increase as well. Myself, my home has at least eight cameras around the street, not on public property, but within the houses, but I also installed cameras on other properties. And I can't tell you the number of times we have actually given footage of police, and during those incidents, we never hear back from the police whether something was done regarding that crime. And just, um...
Mr. Ramirez is right. I think he has provided, um, kind of footage to us in the past. Um, as we talked about at other meetings, that becomes part of a criminal investigation, and we can't report back and tell you until, you know, things go to court and stuff, we can't tell Mr. Ramirez what the results were, reporter or no reporter. We appreciate the help he's given us, but as far as how an investigation continues, we can't just report back when he's not a law enforcement officer. You gotta thank him for his help, but we're not gonna report back and tell him what's going on.
Yeah, exactly. For other crimes that has happened within the city streets, but when I've been a victim of crimes, like I had my bike stolen, um, twice. I provided footage of the police department, and one incident was like over a year ago, and the other one was just recently. So they stay, I still haven't heard back what happened to that investigation as well.
His bike was stolen, he hasn't heard back.
I'll follow up with the detective, they'll contact him where he was.
Yeah, and then when I was, as well, covering another story of illegal parking, where he was parking in front of the fire hydrant, I was, um, taking pictures of the vehicle and the driver and, um, uh, his partner, I'm not sure if they were a couple or what their relationship was. They started getting confrontational, and I was actually pushed by the male guy, and...
The male, a male man?
Yes, a male, and not the male, the male, last name guy, yeah. And, um, the lady was also cursing up on my face to a point where I got cornered into this wall, and the lady was getting all physical.
So, when they were like private, I mean, like, they were private citizens and...
They were, but their vehicle was parked on a public street illegally in front of a fire hydrant, blocking it. So I was documenting...
Did you identify yourself? I mean, because sometimes people...
I was, I was...
Sometimes people don't want their pictures. You know, you're taking, I mean, you're taking a risk just going and taking pictures of people. You know, yes, they might be parked illegally, but you might need to identify, because I don't know why people, you know what I'm saying? If you're just in a car and somebody's randomly taking a picture of you, they're gonna become confrontational.
At the time, yeah, at the time of the picture, there was nobody in the vehicle. I had a vest on the back that said "Press," and my ID is always hanging from the, my pocket. I told them who I was, and they, despite that, they still got confrontational. And the lady was almost on my face to a point where I felt threatened. And I felt like if I had to, I would have hit the lady at the moment, but then she stepped back. And the, when I called the police after, they said they couldn't do anything despite I showing them footage. And they said that unless I was actually basically hit, despite the lady making threats that she was gonna come back and kill me or run me over, the police department decided not to follow up with it, and they said they couldn't do anything about it. And I waited six hours, just so I could be told that outside the department.
Again, I could check to see the thing, but what I, I believe was probably told to Mr. Ramirez that the police department can't sign a complaint. However, he wouldn't allow them to sign all the complaints he wants against the person, but it doesn't elevate, uh, to a crime where the police would sign the complaint themselves. But he can sign a complaint against the lawman if he so chooses. That would be the standard for a call for such an incident.
Well, as you mentioned, now that I know that I would have had at the time, but, you know, when you go seeking for the police help, they just give you a, say, "Oh, we can do this, we can do this and that," but they don't give you an explanation on why your rights are during that time. You know, especially within the Hispanic community, they report things, but the police just doesn't tell them what other options they had. They say, "Oh, we're gonna look into it," but sometimes police officers don't even bother giving incident numbers.
You have to go get a report number and file a claim, is that correct? You go down and you get the information after you await the claim, and the report is processed, that becomes public record, and then you can get the incident report yourself. They don't need to provide that, they don't provide that to you, they're not gonna call you with it. You go down and you get it.
As, yes, I was mentioning, they might not be required to it, but I think if they, uh, courtesy, they would have given it out. When they ask in all their officers, they usually give it out to me.
I don't believe that's a process. I may be wrong.
Exactly. I wasn't there. You could, you just, you know, fall down and ask for the report, and the department will pick it up. Uh, they can provide the, you know, the case number at time, except I wasn't there, uh, today, but, you know.
And I'm thinking in the future, you're gonna, if a car parked illegally, you're gonna call the cops. Instead of, I mean, sometimes, I'm, I'm giving you...
They never arrive.
I'm just giving you this advice, because you're taking pictures of private people, sometimes they don't just care about the first pass or anything else. And then, you know, that can, that can cause a big confrontation.
They can be private people, but on the public street, especially when the vehicle is...
All right, continue, okay, continue.
I just, I just wanna add, and you asked me to say before, and I agree with my captain, you're in pretty smooth system. When you call the police and nobody, eh, shows up, you know, just go back, you know, when you call 911 or you call the police department, they record those calls. So they have a log of, you know, who called, what was the incident, and what was the action. Am I correct, Captain? So if you have an issue that you have called the police, and you know you called, get the dispatch number when you call, find out, and if they don't show up, then you have a right to go and say, "Look, I called the police, say, you could look, and you looked, that I called the police and nobody showed up." It's the only way that it's gonna stop. If, if that's a situation that is, is common, then it's the only way that people know, when you document and you, you say it. Yes, Captain?
You're right, that's correct. We can tell, you know, you can tell you to the second, how long it took the officer to get there, if they didn't show up at all, which very rarely happens. But, and we can tell you why, you know, within reason, it took that long to get there, because most likely, there's other things going on. All the cars get, all the calls get prioritized, and I can, uh, car parked illegally is not gonna get to the top of the priority list. It'll get there eventually, but there's probably other stuff going on, so the police are probably not gonna respond immediately to that call, in general. I can't speak for that.
In one incident, I saw a car illegally parked in front of the fire hydrant. The police went by and even had its window down, and bothered looking at me while I was next to the car, and didn't even stop or look at the vehicle to protest. And just this morning, there was a vehicle coming out of the wrong way. Not one, but two police cars that were fully marked went by, they were going really slow because the traffic was moving slow as well, and they didn't bother telling the driver to move back or anything.
I wasn't there, I can't, I, I hear you. There, I can also say this, you know, there's not, you don't have to issue a summons every time somebody does something inappropriate. There's police discretion, maybe the person got out into traffic. I wasn't there, so I'm just making hypothetical. But if the, if it's easier to let the person get out and move into traffic, if they went down the street the wrong way, but they can get into the oncoming traffic, maybe that's the appropriate thing to do at that time. Again, I wasn't there, so I can't comment on it. But you don't have to pull somebody over, write a summons every time somebody did something wrong.
All right. Well, I hope nobody gets hit during a thing while going the wrong way, or there's a drunk driver coming out the wrong way after, but, thank you. No, not out of my knowledge, but I think there was come out speeding out of the, um, one way.
You said they were going very slow.
Yeah, but I know that there's, um, numerous passages of people coming out the wrong way, and some were just speeding by. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening once again, Charles Crabb, New Brunswick today. Um, did the, was the council receive my request to, uh, speak on the Calvier Best Practices inventory? Not ten or eleven AM, I was hoping to address the Housing Authority, so if you'd be so kind as to give me an extra five minutes, I'd...
You got five minutes and fifteen seconds.
So gracious of you, Mayor. Do you have any response to the scathing audit of the Housing Authority by HUD's Office of Inspector General? The council has no response to this audit?
I didn't, so, I don't have response at this time.
Are you kidding? Can the ladies on to the Housing Authority address whether she has, has anyone even read it on the council?
As I told you already, eh, the text is a parallel. I read, I haven't had the time to set a little bit complex with you, you know, and, 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 I read the information that you sent, because I didn't read them. So I read it, but I haven't had the time to really, eh, digest it, because there's no word for it. I'm dealing with other personal stuff that I haven't had a chance to do that, so I am not gonna comment, because I'm going to cover something that I haven't really studied and read. I just read, scammed.
I understand. I, I think this is a serious, serious matter. And I was a little surprised that the council didn't address it in your best practices inventory. Can you tell me, um, why didn't the council, like they did last year, uh, address the question of authorities with weak membership or insufficient local level monitoring that can become wasteful, inefficient, and unresponsive to the public they serve? Uh, I believe the quote is, "Municipalities should at least annually assess authorities and publicly discuss their findings and conclusions." Why didn't you do that tonight?
I'm not in a position to comment on it, as you just said.
Last year, you had a...
I know, that's last year.
Right, why not this year?
At this point, right now, unless anybody else wanted to comment on it, we weren't ready to comment on it.
Can you please ask your business administrator why that wasn't addressed tonight?
Would you like to?
I'm not sure it's my job to send, uh, your agenda. I intend to, um, bring to the... I intend to bring to the council's agenda, as do the Law Department and the City Clerk, action that we ask you to take. Tonight, the best practices had to be discussed. It is our intention to file it. We answered yes to the question that deals with authorities, and the question said, "In the last year, did you publicly discuss..." I'll use the term, "the effectiveness or the efficiency of the authorities you created." And the answer to that is yes. On October 19th, 2016, you discussed, in this room, with minutes, the appropriateness or the effectiveness of those commissions or agencies you created.
So wouldn't we be due for another annual assessment if it was done on October 19th of last year?
I think you can, you can choose to have that discussion whenever you want to. But the answer, in this particular round of questioning, was a yes answer, because we did, within a year, have a discussion about it.
Okay. I think I know the reason why you didn't have a discussion about it tonight, is because the federal government wants their money back from HUD. Because, wants their money back from the NDHA, because the NDHA has been mismanaging this money. Spending it on things they're not allowed to, ineligible expenses, as well as more than a million dollars in unsupported expenses. Did you see that in the audit? Does that concern you? Don't you think this would be a good time to address this issue?
We will address it, as council will address it at a appropriate time. We said already, yes, we're not gonna address this right now.
Well, so you're gonna address it after it's too late? This audit's dated September 28th. It was not addressed at your last meeting, it's not being addressed tonight. There are very serious findings in here. The authorities have had a recovery agreement with HUD since February. Why, when are you gonna address this?
I just answered the question.
Mr. Carlos, that was the last House and Police meeting, were you there?
Yes, I was.
Did you address the commissioners on these questions, and you were addressing the laws?
No, I didn't know about the audit at that time.
Okay, so I was...
It was released the very next morning.
So I was to just go there and get the question, you know, the answers to some of the questions that you are, and I'll be at the next one, I'll be with you. And let's see what happens, because I think that you don't have any answers here right now. They haven't read, or I'm the only one that I told. I don't know if anybody else read it. And I'm not ready to discuss this, like I said, I need to. I haven't had the chance to really look at it in a way that I could formulate an educated opinion of it. So let's just, you know, wait until we go to the board meeting of the Housing Authority, and then if that doesn't work, then I'll probably come back to us and see, give it a chance to work when it has to be, when it's to be about.
You know, last Tuesday, I spoke with the mayor, I asked him for his side of the story. He said, "Oh, don't worry, there's a corrective action plan in place." I've asked repeatedly for a copy of the corrective action plan. Why won't the city and the Housing Authority release this plan that they're relying on to tell everybody everything's okay?
You should address the mayor's office, and the housing authority's.
I thought that guy was calling you the mayor. Thanks. You'd like that, wouldn't you? Listen, it's disgraceful what's being done at the Housing Authority. You can read, you can read in the paper, John Clark, who's not here tonight, blames it on Hurricane Sandy. Tell me, how is Hurricane Sandy to blame for why they didn't spend money they were allotted in 2009 until 2015? What on earth does Hurricane Sandy have to do with that? What on earth does Hurricane Sandy have to do with $87,000 in excessive management fees being paid related to the demolition of public housing? This is an authority whose mission is to provide housing. They gave $1.1 million to an out-of-state developer to bulldoze that building, and it was on the promise that they would replace it. And it's dead in the water, it's a piece of flat land, there's no housing there. When are you gonna realize there's a problem? I put it on the front page of New Brunswick Today. I've been shouting from the mountaintops. I've been going all the means, I've been getting them on video. Watch these meetings, watch them, it will be clear to you that it's like dealing with a bunch of pathological liars. They say one thing one month, and then I come back the next month, and they act like I'm the crazy one, because they didn't do what they said they were gonna do. Councilwoman Escobar's been kind enough to join me in some of the meetings, and even speak up and ask questions, and she should be commended for that. However, she'll recall at the January meeting that now that, once HUD started sniffing around, they started talking about doing a retreat. And they said, "Oh, we'll be hosting a retreat." It's gonna be scheduled for February, probably February, and that's really the first step towards having the public involved with solving these problems. Can you tell me, did they have a retreat this year? Or did they say the same BS at the September meeting, where they say, "Oh yeah, we're gonna have to retreat, it'll probably be in October"?
The message from my hearing hasn't taken place, but I don't know.
But you were there back in January, when you said it was gonna happen in February.
I usually, and I was told from my experience way, way back, when I was a commissioner, that we did have those retreats.
Right, what happened, what fell apart?
I'm not saying that they haven't happened, I'm just saying that they do happen. So this year, I know that, I recall that meeting, that where they said that it would happen. I don't know why it hasn't happened, so that's something that we address at the next board meeting. I'm assuming it might be a forum issue, where, I can assume, so it's better to us, right?
Well, I'll have you know, this recovery agreement spells out some dire consequences for the authority. It could be debarred. They could take possession of their housing and give it to HUD. It could be entered to receivership or be suspended. Mayor Cahill signed this document. So something's seriously wrong. And we're the public being left in the dark, not allowed to see the corrective action plan. Literally, if you went to every board meeting of the Housing Authority this year, you wouldn't know there was an audit. You wouldn't know there was HUD OIG there. You wouldn't know there was a recovery agreement. And the action plan has been specifically kept secret. And you guys know, I don't like that. And that is, one of the things that really is making me so upset about this, is that in any other situation, there are pressure valves to release. You can ask the mayor, "Hey, what's your side of the story?" "Oh, there's a corrective action plan, let me see it." Right? That would be the normal way that things would play out, right? But they're keeping the corrective action plan a secret. And I think it's worth noting that two of the vendors...
The last two.
Okay. The vendor, Manfredi and Pollicchio, is a lawyer, right? They represent nine different housing authorities. How could they not know that they were screwing up the procurement rules so badly in the very case where they hired themselves? And if you want the proof, right here, proof's in the pudding, it's the last point.
Thank you.
Last point. You can watch April 26th meeting video, where Manfredi and Pollicchio was hired by the board. And John Clark, in this really twisted way, says, "Well, the annual contract, well, this was, it was bid, and the successful and highest scored request came from Manfredi and Pollicchio." Chairman Yerger Walden asked a pretty good question, he said, "How many bids were there?" "One." Why would he say it was the successful and highest bid, if he's not being disingenuous? If he was being honest, and they weren't trying to steer the money to their crooked friends, he would have said it was only there. But they have something to hide, they're behaving as if they have something to hide, and you should care about it, so...
Thank you. Mr. Spencer, we're gonna, after, we just have to make sure nobody, we'll talk about after the meeting's closed, guys.
I just...
Because we just, I know, but we have to, we have to. Because otherwise, we have to give everybody else a chance a second time around. We just have to stay within...
What disaster that would be.
You go ahead.
I promise.
You've got to say something, go ahead.
Mr. Spencer, I promise, when we pull it off.
I really want this on camera, I want this, because I want everybody to hear it.
Key drums, 56, which will have rooms, there's two things now. I did have one thing, but I have two things. So a lot of the conversation tonight is about crime, and garbage, and etc., quality of life issues. I just want to encourage everybody in the room to attend their neighborhood watch or block club meetings. Officer Gould in the back, and myself, Charlie Gaden over there. We all attend the block club or the neighborhood crime watch meetings. That's Maranza has one, Second Ward has one, Uptown has one. We're starting one in 4-5, and we're trying to get 4-2 engaged as well. So a lot of these issues, we can kind of head off, and make sure that we can have regular dialogue, and figure out ways that we can increase the quality of life within the city. I know garbage is an issue in my ward, and it's weird as well. But it's also a communication breakdown, cross the lines. Those slips that go out in the mail, or that you're supposed to come pick up from downtown, don't ever make it there, or vice versa. Or you have different tenants moving in and out, different landlords. So there's a number of things that both sides, all sides can do to kind of fix some of these very, very simple situations than making them worse. The other thing is, we, in the city of New Brunswick, we have over 22 food pantries in the city of New Brunswick. And we also, we're all part of what's called the New Brun, Feeding New Brunswick Network. We get food, we receive food from McFoods, which is in East Brunswick, it's a county food bank, as well as Community Food Bank, which is located in Hillside. At this current time, our pantries across the city, across the county are depleted. The issue, the challenges, which is a complex one is, after the summer, which is our busiest time of the year. Many folks think that the winter is when you're supposed to give to the needy or give to these families. It's actually the opposite. The summer is the hardest time for most families. Being that you don't have schools to give your child two to three meals, or you don't have schools to daycare, for daycare for your, for your child. So there's a lot of money coming out of that household and, you know, supplying meals for the family. And what we say, or what happens across the country, is we say that hunger does not take advantage. In the summertime, we think that people are okay. That's the hardest time of the year for most families. So what happens historically is, our pantries get depleted in the summer. And we rely on donations and etc. at the end of the summer to, you know, rebuild our pantries. And that carries us over into the holiday time, when everybody starts to give their big hearts. But what happened was, we had the string of natural disasters that happened across the globe. And as a result, in our big hearts, we've been giving donations to those natural disasters. At the same time, our pantries have been absolutely depleted. So over the next couple of weeks, and we have been doing so for about two weeks now, Jennifer, myself, a couple other folks, the Feeding New Brunswick Network, the county, we've been doing a number of food drops. We've been asking people that are donating to the affected areas to... If you're gonna send four cases of water to the Virgin Islands, please, give two to your local pantry. If you're gonna send food and stuff to Puerto Rico, please, give some, to make sure that you do another donation for your local pantries. We absolutely no help to anybody else if we can't take care of our next donor. So our message from, this message is basically for the camera itself, so we can get the word out, to make sure that, yes, we want to be able to help all these affected areas, but we also want to be able to take care of all of this. So if you need any assistance, or you need any information on where our pantries, or where to find our pantries, you can contact me. Or you can go right on Facebook, we have the New Brunswick, We feed New Brunswick Network, we have McFoods Network, Rockers Against Hunger, Community Food Bank in Hillside. Again, we have over 22 pantries in the city of New Brunswick. Alone, 5.5 square miles, we have over 22 pantries. So that's my, my call for action, or call out. And we just want to try to figure out that, you know, make sure that people keep that on the forefront of their, of their mind. Thank you.
Make a motion.
No, please. What are you afraid of? I just want to...
Excuse me, that's, we're not falling out, and we're keeping this in order. We're not afraid of anything.
You're afraid to address the law of the House and Police.
Now, excuse me, now you're out of order. See, this is, this is what you do. See, now you're out of order. And you know how, you've been coming to this meeting this for a long time. I said I'm going to respond to her, and that's exactly what I'm gonna do. So you want to go out of order, for some reason, you know, you do this, you want to get out of order, and turn this meeting into something else. So I'm not afraid of anything, okay?
I just want to say something before the lady leaves. I was gonna say, to add, señora, to add to some of what you just said, there is certain organizations and different things going on in the communities. And in your community, there's one, they have a crime watch. They have, they're doing, we need to square, they're doing neighborhood cleanup campaigns, they're doing purification, they're planting flowers, helping neighbors if you want to put signs, and all of that stuff. So besides that, but you're absolutely right, that area of development, truth, is very, needs attention in terms of the crime and the shootings. I think somebody told me that this week, and there's some shots on Saturday. So I do understand that part, but there's also ways that you could be part of what's going on. Even, you don't have to be part of the whole organization, but you may want to go there to get to know who goes there, if somebody, members from the police department, members from other community agencies that are there. And you could deal and talk about those quality of life issues that you have, and safety issues. So I encourage you to do that. Because there's people out there who are dealing with what you're dealing with, and they're trying to come up, like Devesa said, everybody together to try to make our community a better place, and safe for everyone.
Thank you so much.
See, no motion?
Second. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Legu, yes, council president of the...
Yes.